Please join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Would like to take roll call, please.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Detschel?
Here.
Mrs. Detschel?
Here.
Mr. T-Sort?
Here.
Mr. Yosmore?
Here.
Amy? Okay. First up on the list here is recognition of Northwest School PTA Staff of the Year.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, no, my mask is stuck to my earring, but we're just gonna move right on.
It's supposed to be that way.
There you go. Hey, it's an accessory. Well, I hope you all are having a great day, a great Monday evening. Today marks a very special day, not only because we're all gathered here for a board meeting, but also because today marks the start of our Teacher Appreciation Week, and I can't think of a better day to honor our 2020-2021 PTA Staff of the Year winners than today. We had lots of winners throughout our district. We had several buildings had several winners throughout their building, and so we wanted an opportunity to introduce our staff and all the work that they're doing to our board and also to our community. So you all could not only see their faces, hear their names, but you could hear a lot about the work that they are doing each and every day to make our district everything that it is, which I think is great.
Awesome.
Unfortunately, since we had such a large number, everyone was not able to be present on Zoom today. So we will acknowledge those who are on Zoom today, today's meeting, and then on May 17th, we will acknowledge those who are not able to make it today. And then unfortunately as well, there are people that couldn't make either day. So I will be acknowledging them today by reading their name and also reading the submission that was put in for them as well. So with that being said, I want to give a few instructions to our staff that's online. When I call your name, if you could just wave, and then our technology department and Waycross will see you waving, and then they will pin your video to the front of the screen so everyone can see your smiling face. All right? How about that? Hope you guys have it. All right, so bear with me, I have a lot to read tonight. So the first person that we'd like to acknowledge as the 2020 and 2021 PTA Staff of the Year is a man who's not on Zoom, but he's actually here in the room with us today. It is Jack Fisher, who is the principal of Corrin High School. Throughout his time here at CHS, Mr. Fisher brought forth new ideas that have opened doors for students and staff, encouraged positive changes that have made for an even stronger learning environment, and brought together our school community along with outside organizations for the betterment of our students and their families. Mr. Fisher demonstrates these qualities each year, but this year has presented an even greater need for his strong leadership skills. Mr. Fisher, wait, please, stand, please. All right, sounds good. I should have asked him to do it. And there's more to read, so I just wanted him to stand, but you guys, thank you all for clapping. All right, so this year has been like no other. Our students have had to experience a year of many changes and unknowns. Mr. Fisher works daily to try to make this a safe year, yet a memorable experience for these students. He takes time to listen to others, encourages students and staff to have a voice, supports decisions that provide our students with the best outcome. Mr. Fisher brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the table, but understands that it is vital to gather multiple perspectives before making a decision. His actions each and every day are confirmation that he truly wants what is best for students, no matter what it takes. Mr. Fisher continues to lead our staff through this demanding year with a positive and a realistic view. He never turns away an idea brought to him, but also provides information to allow for staff to have a well-rounded outlook. Even though this year has been tough for many, he does not see this as an opportunity to be less rigorous than a typical year. He continues to challenge staff and look at things in a different light, encouraging staff to find different ways to connect with kids. More than ever, Mr. Fisher's ability to lead has been evident. His qualities go beyond each day for our students, staff, and the Corrin community. Those and those are lifelong cardinal. And those are those of a lifelong cardinal, excuse me. Please join me in recognizing and appreciating the hard work of Mr. Jack Fisher. Alrighty. The next person that we'd like to honor as the 2020-2021 PTA Staff of the Year is a person that is not on Zoom tonight, but it's a teacher from CMS, and her name is Lori Lynn. And this submission was submitted by a staff member. We can't possibly say enough good things about Ms. Lynn. She's a great teacher in the classroom, keeping the kids engaged and making school days a lot of fun despite the chaos of this year. She goes to extra effort to pull off simple and silly pranks, such as having everyone hide and disappear before the next teacher arrives, and she gives the kids fun uplifting nicknames to reinforce the good about them. These things are sometimes inconvenient and require more engagement, but they are small things that make middle school students love school and look forward to not missing a day of class. Her students love her and tell how she makes them laugh and smile almost every day. Her colleagues share that she's an incredibly hard worker and a wonderful person. She goes above and beyond outside of the classroom, as well as shows up at sports events, even at away schools, to support her students and cheer them on. One of her most amazing qualities is that she's an incredible listener and encourager. It is unusual to find someone who listens in such a selfless way, who you know is interested and really cares about what you're saying. She rarely, if ever, talks about herself as she listens. She is very talented at getting others to open up and share about themselves, and she then affirms what they say and makes them feel great about who they are and what they are accomplishing. It's a special gift and makes a huge impact on her students that helps them grow today and will last a lifetime. So this year, we are honored to recognize Ms. Lori Lynn as our very deserving Staff of the Year. All right, our next Staff of the Year winner is Elizabeth Jump. Elizabeth, give us a wave. All right. Elizabeth is a teacher from Pleasant Run Middle School, and this submission was sent in by one of the parents. "I would like to nominate Ms. Jump because she truly has gone above and beyond this year to help my son succeed. She has patiently answered all of our questions and provided constant communication to keep me informed. She created ways to help him navigate this crazy year. Her positivity and encouragement has brought both my son and myself comfort and peace. I've never had anyone communicate with me as much as she has, which has truly been appreciated. She even sends emails telling me about his great days. Having a child with special needs is very hard, but having such a caring person on this team is truly a blessing. Thank you from the bottom of my heart." Please join me in giving a big, great round of applause to Elizabeth Jump. Our next winner is Rachel May. Rachel, give us a wave. Keep waving. All right, well, we will recognize Rachel, she may not be on, but her submission was sent in, and it says, "It is our pleasure to recommend Rachel May as the White Oak Middle School Co-Staff Member of the Year." There were two submissions for White Oak. "Ms. May is a valued member of the White Oak School and our district. She spends countless hours working with students in school and then outside of school as she coaches multiple sports here and at the high school. She also serves as our building leadership team, on our building leadership team. Many times she serves as a moral compass and a guide for our building as she treats everyone with dignity and respect. Rachel is an innovative and accomplished teacher who is always trying to try new things within the classroom." Here are a few words that her students had to share about her. "Ms. May makes every project fun for science and social studies, and she teaches two subjects so we can learn. Ms. May goes above and beyond her normal job because she is so nice and kind. She listens to questions. She helps make this learning environment fun and easy since we are in a pandemic and we can't really do much fun stuff, but she makes the pandemic fun and easy. She does so much to make things easy, but we still learn things. Ms. May deserves this because she's so nice. She helps everyone. It is fun to be around her, and she gives out such good energy." Please join me in giving Rachel May a round of applause. The next person that we'll recognize tonight is also not on the Zoom, it is Clayton Lindley, and he is also a teacher at White Oak Middle School. "Mr. Lindley makes a point to build strong relationships with students and staff members. He's the epitome of a student-centered teacher. Clayton's intuition for our students' social and emotional well-being helps to create a positive dynamic seen in his classroom each and every day. In addition, he spends countless hours working with student athletes at White Oak Middle School as their coach." Some of his students had this to say about Mr. Lindley. "He deserves this award because he lectures us on what life will look like. I've taken his tips and used them in my everyday life, like when he stated, 'Start caring about school now rather than later.' The only thing more important than his lectures are the way he makes everyone enjoy whatever he is teaching at that time. Mr. Lindley not only teaches us science, but also motivates us to succeed in life. He has positively impacted my life by being one of my main motivations to try in class." Mr. Lindley deserves this award because he has life-class conversations and asks us, I'm sorry, what's going on, etc. He also gives us a grid where we can work at our own pace, and if we need anything, we can ask him in class and email him with a quick response. Off the grid, we do class assignments and just enjoy doing group posters, too. Mr. Lindley tries to go above and beyond to make science fun." Please join me in giving Mr. Lindley a round of applause. Our next person is Margot Manger. There she is. Thank you for waving, Margot. Margot is a teacher at Monford Heights Elementary, and her submission was put in by a parent. "Our daughter has been so very blessed to be in Ms. Manger's class this year. Throughout two rounds of COVID quarantines, Ms. Manger has supported our daughter endlessly. She's made home deliveries and pickups, added Zoom meetings, and checked on her every day. She has kept her connected in every way possible. In addition to going above and beyond to support her during virtual school, she was a huge part of her overall success this year. Our daughter started the year a bit behind, and Ms. Manger worked with us to get her caught up far beyond what we thought possible. She brings so much joy and love to her class, and we are just so very thankful for her, especially during this difficult year." Please join me in giving Margot Manger a round of applause. All right, our next person is Kathy Yorio. Kathy, oh, there she is. All right, we see ya. All right. Kathy is also a teacher at Monford Heights Elementary, and her submission was also put in by a parent. "It takes a special person to want to teach, and I believe even more so to want to teach kindergarten. My son did not go to preschool, so the classroom was new to him. He has learned so much this year, not only his ABCs, sight words, and numbers, but how to focus, sit, and pay attention most of the time. How Ms. Yorio keeps their attention during Zoom meetings, I can't even imagine. A full day in the classroom during a pandemic. Part of kindergarten is the socialization. How she manages that is amazing. My son loves school, has friends, and is learning despite social distancing and wearing a mask. This is all possible because he is an outstanding teacher who thoroughly loves her job and the future of our children. Ms. Yorio has also been seen volunteering her time for after-school events. She's communicated throughout the school year and has always been available and quick to respond via email. My only regret is that I have not been able to volunteer and see the greatness in action. Thank you, Mrs. Yorio, and all the staff at MHE." Please join me in giving a great round of applause to Mrs. Yorio. The next person is Vicki Priestman. Vicki, will you give us a wave? I love it. Great smile. Her submission was also put in by a parent. "Ms. Priestman has gone above and beyond all school year long. From the first day of school, she welcomed our students into the building with open and loving arms. She's shown empathy, compassion, and kindness to our students every day. She's adapted and put hard work into using technology and making it all work for our students. She's shown compassion for our children in the classroom and in their personal lives. My son has had a previous medical condition and has routine scans every three months. She's reached out each of these times and showed concern for his well-being. I am thankful for all that she's done this year, and she deserves to be recognized." Please join me in giving a round of applause to Vicki Priestman. Vicki is a teacher at Corrin Elementary. They had two winners this year. The second winner is Amy Smith, who's not here, but I will go ahead and read her submission as well. And Amy's submission was also put in by a parent. "This has been so different, and Ms. Smith has done an excellent job. She cares so much about her students, always there when my son needs help with his homework and with classwork." Please join me in giving Amy Smith a round of applause. Pleasant Run Elementary had two winners as well. We'll acknowledge one today and then one on the 17th. Tonight, we'd like to acknowledge Rosie Spray. And if you can see, Casey is there cheering you on. All right, thank you, Casey. All right, Rosie, this is what was sent in about Rosie. "Rosie is a very kind soul and is a very nurturing teacher. Students thrive in her classroom, and she makes first grade magical for her students. Rosie is also very caring and considerate of her work family. She goes out of her way to do nice things for staff and is always willing to listen and help a staff person in need. The world is a better place with her teaching our young people. This year, Rosie took on remote class. She made sure to make connections and as many in-person experiences as possible to build those relationships. The building has received many phone calls and compliments about Ms. Spray's ability to keep her child and their children engaged throughout the difficult remote learning setting. Students continue to have secret readers throughout the year, and when they reach their goal, special online dance parties were held with some popular local radio personalities. Ms. Rosie Spray makes PRE a better place." Please join me in giving Rosie a round of applause. The next person is Lindsay Pleasant. Lindsay, give us a wave. All right, thank you. Lindsay is a teacher at Taylor Elementary. "There's no one who cares about her students more than Ms. Pleasant. She understands the power of relationships and truly believes that each and every one of her students can succeed. She creates a family culture in her room where respect is key and everyone supports each other. Ms. Pleasant works to use best practice instruction and seeks to find engaging activities that require students to apply their knowledge. She does not rest until every student is supported and is experiencing success. She's a leader in the area of teaching foundation literacy skills and has mentored and supported many staff members in learning the recipe for reading program. One parent summed it up best when she wrote, 'She cares about each and every one of her students and does everything she can to show this. This year, my daughter is having some trouble keeping up no matter how hard she tries. Ms. Pleasant has been working with us since the beginning, even on the weekends. She's helped to get the support my daughter has needed so that she would not be left behind. I know that my family is not the only family that she's been helping. I'm so grateful and appreciative of her and all that she's done.'" It sounds like Ms. Pleasant lives up to her name. Please join me in giving Lindsay Pleasant a round of applause. And the last and final person that we will announce today is Danya Nuhos. And I hope I'm saying that right, Danya. All right, and oh, look, there's a May celebrating. All right, and that's the principal, May Murray. Danya, keep waving for us so that they can make sure to pin the correct video. All right, there she is. Is it Nuhos? Nuhos? "Danya Nuhos is an outstanding and gifted teacher for Houston Early Learning Centers four-year-old students. She goes above and beyond in all facets of her profession for her students and families. Families, yes. Every moment is a teaching moment for Danya, in the classroom, in the hallways, on the playground, traveling to and from, the bathroom, the gym, the outdoor learning lab, and during arrival and dismissal. Ms. Nuhos utilizes every opportunity to seize learning and stretch the curriculum for her students. When you enter Ms. Nuhos's classroom, students are observed to be highly engaged in dialogue, literacy, math, art, exploring manipulatives, science, and practicing restorative practices. Even during COVID, students enjoy conversations while wearing their mask, reading books, and partake in development of positive social and emotional skills. Danya's zest for incorporating fun and learning into everyday experiences is one of her many talents as a teacher." Please join me in giving Danya Nuhos a round of applause. Actually, there's a page, too. So give me one second, I'm just gonna finish reading Danya's submission. It says, "This year, Danya added two classroom pets to her classroom. They are adorable skinny pigs. Their names are Harriet and Athena, and they are active participants in the student's curriculum. For example, they partake in bath and spa time, as an extension of the book, The Pigeon Needs a Bath. They are active participants in the instruction for positive words and in the science area. Students love to feed their classroom pets fresh fruit and vegetables, and boy, can they squill. To honor Ms. Nuhos as HELC's Teacher of the Year is a well-deserved recognition. Thank you, Ms. Nuhos, for all you do for students, families, and members of HELC. We are grateful to you and honored by your outstanding professionalism and dedication to Northwest young students." All right, one more time, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you all for being patient with me, there was so much to read. And like I stated before, those who were not present tonight, we will be sure to honor again on May the 13th. Thank you. Oh, yes, May 13th, thank you.
Anything else? Any comment? Next, we have a presentation for the high school eight-bell schedule model for 2021-2022 school year.
At this time, we'll have high school principal Jack Fisher, Joe Pollitt will report out on the high school eight-bell schedule model for 2021-2022. Schedule includes larger-scale opportunity for all students for intervention enrichment, A/B format, 85-minute classes. Would also like to point out that Leslie Sublinagle and Dustin Gary might have some comments as they go through this process.
How many minutes are the classes now for seven bells?
Forty-seven, forty-eight?
How much?
Forty-eight.
And what are they gonna be for?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
A/B schedule, eighty-five.
Oh, A/B schedule, okay. Am I okay to take this off or something?
Yes.
Thanks. Good evening, appreciate the opportunity to be here. This is kind of just a snapshot of a lot of work that's been going on for a really long time. I'm gonna deal, Joe and I are looking for a logical way to kind of divide this up, so I'm gonna kind of deal with the whys, and then he's gonna deal with the whats. And then I'm sure we'll get questions about the whens, the wheres, and all that, the hows. So start here, obviously, this was actually a slide, if you remember, a presentation about a year ago, January. Susan Smith and I sat here and did a presentation on the high school redesign. We did a rather extensive, talked about different pillars of the high school redesign. So this slide actually, and I'll get into, this is the whys, but this slide came from that presentation, it talked about flexible space, flexible scheduling, flexible learning environments, flexible bell schedules. So we had been doing a lot of research on what other high schools were doing, what school could be, and things like that. And so then along came COVID, right? And so how did we get here? Well, we were already working on a schedule, a more flexible schedule that would provide our biggest, we felt like one of our biggest needs at the time was what we'd call extra time, extra help, which is what the ETEH is. And so we were working on that structure anyway. If COVID had not hit this school year, we were talking about bringing in freshmen and sophomore early for remediation, for maybe some more AP classes, more specialized classes, more opportunities. And so obviously, it was different this year, but we were already working on a flexible schedule to be able to provide more extra time, extra help. We did a lot of brainstorming, even after this year started the way it did with us being in cohorts, about how would we reboot the high school redesign concepts coming out of COVID? And so that was a constant source of conversation for us. Then we got into what has worked this year, and you know, it's real easy, I've heard a lot of conversation, I've watched most of the board meetings, and of course, we get feedback from parents and kids all the time and teachers, but I do think there are a lot of positives that came out of this year in terms of how we do school, for lack of a better term. We certainly learned how to be adaptable this year, whether it be cohorts, whether it be different types of schedules. I mean, to be able to flip like we did on March 22nd and go to an A/B schedule coming out of cohorts, I think it showed a lot of resilience from our teachers, our students, and our families. And so, sorry, so we learned how to be adaptable this year, no question about it. We are currently running an A/B schedule, four bells each day, with a remote Wednesday, and that was again to make a transition back to in-person learning coming out of the cohort situation. The climate of the in-person experience this year, there has certainly been less discipline, and that's, I mean, literally, from the thousands of referrals that we normally deal with, we get very few referrals a day, a lot of days we get zero referrals. And I think that has to do a lot of, I mean, look, we all know we've got less kids in the building, things like that. For us, we've got about half what we would normally, but we still have, you know, between eight and nine hundred, and Joe has about three hundred. So there are still kids in the building, there are things going on, but certainly, we don't move around as much, things are different, and that's been less discipline, which is a positive. A lot of us have personal experiences with A/B schedules in the past, and I do want to make the distinction, Joe and I were talking about this before the meeting, we're gonna talk about some of the survey work and some of the comments we've gotten from teachers. This is not the four-by-four that this district ran several years ago, and that's a big distinction to make when we're talking about longer class bells and things like that. The four-by-four block schedule, for lack of a better term, was you would take every day, take that course every day, so you could get a math credit in one semester. And the problem, there were some positives from it, you talked to a lot of our staff, they'll give you some positives. They will also tell you that to take a math first semester, you may not have to take a math second semester, which means you could go a long period of time without math and foreign language. So I just want to make that distinction when we talk about these high school schedules. This is not the four-by-four schedule. We are talking, kids will have class like math, language arts, etc., for the entire year, bigger chunks every other day. So I just want to make that distinction. So this is just real quickly, kind of how we got here to where we want to go next year. Potential benefits, again, we've done a lot of work around this, we have a lot of experience. I personally have been in an A/B schedule for several years at Mount Helfi. I personally have been in an A/B schedule for several years at Mount Healthy when I was principal there. It gives you the ability to go deeper instead of wider. And I think we've all, this is a philosophical educational conversation anyway. We talk about, is it more important to get through the entire textbook from August to May? Or is it more important to take those really important topics and standards and go deeper instead of wider? And so, that's a conversation. We think that there are new innovative strategies meant to engage students. Talk about these all the time, but it's hard to do a lot of them in a 48-minute bell. Something as simple as a lab, if you talk to Mark Lehman, by the time he sets up, the kids do fifteen, twenty minutes of a lab, and then they've got to clean up, put away, and all that kind of stuff. Very difficult to do some things on a 48-minute bell. So, we believe we can develop more project-based learning labs, writing seminars. If you look at the survey work we've done with teachers, and Joe's going to mention some of that, but we've got 130 responses from teachers, and in that, they put things like, "This will be great, I can now do a writing seminar, I can now do a better lab, I can now do..." And they start listing the things that they believe they'll be able to do in an 85-minute bell. This is a big key. We're not terming this necessarily a block schedule, we are terming this an eighth-bell schedule. And this eighth bell is a big piece of this, and I know Joe's going to talk about this too. This eighth bell allows us flexibility to offer some courses, or more sections of courses than maybe kids would have gotten shut out of. If you take an honors kid or an AP kid, and they're trying to cram band, or art, and some of the things that they really have interest in and want to take, but then they're trying to get all their APs, honors, et cetera, sometimes their schedule gets gummed up. And we always talk every year, what are different ways that we can do? It's one of the reasons a lot of schools now go to offering more eighth-grade credit opportunities, things like that, because you're trying to free up bells during the school day to where kids can take more things, whether it be an AP or an honors or CCP, or whether it just be an interest area that they have, like art, that they may not be normally able to fit into their schedule. So, we believe the eighth-bell concept provides a lot of flexibility for our students to be able to take some of the courses they've been shut out from. And Joe's going to talk about, again, band, choir, and things like that. There are still ways that we can offer some of these every day, all right? And so, not all of them will be every other day. We're going to look for opportunities to tailor our schedule for the best needs for our students. Teachers do see less students per day, they have more time to build relationships, time to expand the number of strategies for teaching a concept. You can now go into a classroom, maybe you still have to lecture for ten or fifteen minutes, but then you can do groups, you can do Socratic seminars, you can do some of the other things to be able to expand on a topic instead of running out of time after 48 minutes. More potential benefits, we would not advocate giving time for homework daily, but I would make this point, especially in math. And I'll just use me, I won't use anybody else. When my daughters start coming home with pre-calc, I mean, I have a master's degree, but when my daughters, when my daughter took honors pre-calc and said, "Dad, can you help me with my homework?" That's why I was a social studies teacher, I'll just put it that way. So, we would not advocate necessarily that a teacher still teaches thirty, forty minutes, and then gives the kids the rest of the time to do homework. But I would make the case, especially in math, that our kids need guided practice with the teacher sitting there, being able to help them, especially in the subject of math. And so, a lot of our students go home, they may not have support at home for, especially a subject like math. And so, I don't, I don't think it's wrong, or I'm not embarrassed to say that if our teachers on certain days give kids problems, and they give guided practice with the teacher in the room, be able to help them, especially in the area of math, I think that's a good thing. We think we can match multiple strategies with multiple levels of students. If you were to pull our teachers, get into this conversation, they would say, "Jack, yes, I'm teaching an honors class, but I still have kids at this level, still have kids at this level, and still have kids in a high level, even in an honors class or an advanced class." And so, we feel like we'll be able to have more strategies within the same bell to meet more learners' needs. For 10th, 11th grade, for 10th, 11th, and 12th students, I think I got a little bit of the wording wrong, but we, we see us double-blocking courses this year. And I'll explain that for a second. We've got kids, and we've all known this, I've heard the board meetings, I've heard talk about this, I've heard Todd talk about this. We've got kids that have failed some courses because they've been remote, they've, they've been home, or they haven't been able to handle the whole virtual learning that we've had. So, we, we know we're going to have some kids coming back behind. We want to get those kids caught up. And I'll just give you an example, let's take a freshman this year who's failed algebra and language arts, all right? We want to bring them in 10th grade, we want to double up their math, double up their English, so that by, by the end of the school year, they're back on track. So, they can take, let's say, we break algebra up into Algebra 1A, Algebra 1B. They can take Algebra 1A, we double-block it by them taking it every day for a semester, they get through A, they get through B second semester, and now they're back on track to take geometry the next year. And hopefully, we get a lot of kids caught up that way. So, we know we're going to have kids coming back this year off the COVID year that are behind, and we've got to have some processes for getting them back on track. And of course, with some of the ESAR dollars, we are hiring extra teachers for that. So, to be able to double-block these classes, we anticipate having a group of kids that we want to get back on track so that they can graduate on time. And we have examples of schedules. I know Todd, Brendan, Dustin have one of the other PowerPoint schedules, we've got examples of schedules, we've got a lot of other information that are links. Last slide for me, less time wasted per year. You know, we've had a lot of conversation about time. And if you take 48 minutes, 169 student days, it equals this number. If you take 85 minutes times this number of student days, it equals this. We're losing some overall days, but we feel like we're going deeper. But we're not losing as much time as you would think, because we waste a lot of time in class transitions every day. If you take changing bells seven days, or seven times a day, five-minute bell changes, we lose thirty to forty minutes every day anyway. Now, we're putting that time back into class, and we think that's big. We think we can improve the school climate with less transitions. I think Joe would say this, Joe, I know Joe and I obviously worked at Colrain, now he's at Northwest. A lot of our discipline problems are between bells, kids seeing somebody in the hallway, they've been texting during class or whatever, they see each other in the hallway, they're poking at each other, messing around, things like that. So, we think by less transitions, we'll have less discipline problems. We still are going to have a large block in the middle of the day, and we're going to show you an example of the schedule. And Northwest Colrain will do this slightly different, but the concept will be the same. We've got a large block of time in the middle of the day, they'll have class, they'll have advisory, and they'll have lunch in that larger block of time. And so, in that advisory, this will give us time to focus on social-emotional topics, positive behavior, and other pertinent topics that we cover in advisory, or we want to cover in advisory, and sometimes we just don't have enough time. And so, that's all of the potential benefits that we've had. I'll hand it to Joe.
Thank you, Jack, good evening. So, what's the process been? How have we gotten to this point? We've started this conversation really throughout the school year, and it really picked up once we went back on March 22nd with the A/B schedule. We saw how it went with the staff, we saw how people were embracing it, utilizing that time. And so, then, really, the conversation started to gain some traction. Could we do this every day next year? Is this something we could try and continue? And so, we met with our building leadership teams, we surveyed them, we've gotten some feedback. Also, both of us gave surveys to our staffs recently. Again, Jack said we had over 130 combined teachers between the two schools respond. I had about eighty percent of my teaching staff respond, and it was a high-level support. There were some people who had some reservations, depending on specific content areas. We also had some people who, if I knew more about it, I might be a little more supportive. And so, we started capturing some of those concerns and listening to that feedback. And, you know, staff meetings are going to be happening. I had a meeting with the staff at Northwest on Thursday afternoon, and I think Jack's meeting tomorrow with the staff at Colrain. And so, I've gotten some feedback from teachers as well after that staff meeting Thursday that said, you know, "We learned more about it, you showed us some examples of the schedule and how this might work. I do feel better about things, you know, with more information, with more questions, and more feedback." We've also met with Butler Tech several times. I know Todd has met with their superintendent as well to kind of go through some of this. We want to make sure they're continuing to have their seat time for their program hours, for their CCP opportunities, and most importantly, their co-ops. We think we can work out schedules where maybe seniors would only report to school on A-days, for example, and B-days would be a day for them to co-op and continue to get their credit and earn money and transition into a workplace upon graduation. We're looking to send a parent letter out on Wednesday, as far as communicating this to parents. We're also going to set up a virtual meeting, both high schools will collaborate around this on the evening of Wednesday, May 19th. And we'll send a link out to that, prior to that meeting as well, for parents to engage with us, ask questions, provide feedback as well. Again, alluding to staff meetings, I met with our staff at Northwest on Thursday, Jack is doing his tomorrow afternoon. And then, it's going to be, you know, let's get this in motion, let's, you know, put the boots on the ground and do the work. So, looking at some of the remaining time that we have in May with teachers, how do we reorganize classes? How do you take a year-long class and then deliver it every other day for 85 minutes? What, what adjustments do we need to make? What priorities will be set there in terms of essential understandings, learning objectives? How can we strategize this? Then, it would be creating the master schedule. You know, we know right now what courses kids want, we know what the sections are, what courses kids are requesting. How do we deliver that in the A/B format? And then, what's the best way to assign teaching staff to those schedules, and what would that look like? Again, part of this too is what Jack alluded to. We know that we're going to have kids coming back to us in August with credit deficiencies from credits they missed this year. We know there's kids, the bigger issue, there's the learning gap. You know, they're deficient on their skills, the learning gap is there. This will allow us time to support those students, and I'll show that when we illustrate the schedule here in just a second. Also, with teacher plan time, you know, we're going to assign time and duties and responsibilities. The ESAR funding has created a tremendous opportunity for us to support the teachers and the work that they'll be doing over the next two years, and this will be part of that. They'll have time set aside in their schedule when their plan bell falls, either on the A-day or on the B-day. And they'll be able to meet with instructional coaches, data coaches, us as administrators will be in having these conversations, so that when the ESAR funds have expired in two years, we're going to come back stronger than we were before the pandemic. That's our goal, and that's our pledge to the district. And then, again, in May, in June, July, the administrators and counselors will be working on the student's schedules to get the kids where they need to be. Again, whether it's the enrichment piece, whether it's kids who are behind and need to be caught up, and need to be scheduled into some remediation, the flexibility will be there, and we'll be able to get those kids where they need to be. Here's kind of an example of what the schedule is looking like. The teacher report time would stay at 7:25, and every day, whether it's an A-day or a B-day, a teacher would have a 30-minute uninterrupted plan bell. So, we would keep the students in the cafeteria and the auditorium, keep them away from classrooms, so teachers don't have a responsibility or duty with students until 8:00 AM. So then, A-days, you would have first bell, second bell, the third bell, lunch block that Jack alluded to, and then a fourth bell. You'd have 85 minutes of instruction in that large chunk of time for third bell on the A-day. The B-day, again, same format, you'd have your fifth bell, your sixth bell, your large chunk of time with seventh bell, and then your eighth bell. What we would like to do at Northwest is we'll deliver three different lunches within this bell. And then, we have the advisory time, where students would travel, they would see the same advisor every day for about 10 to 12 minutes, kind of like the old homeroom model that we used to have in high school. When I was a teacher at Colrain, I had the same advisory for four years. And then, I read those kids' names at graduation, you got to know those kids, and that's where the relationship piece comes in. And that also is the social-emotional learning and the positive behavior intervention supports that Jack alluded to. To us, that's going to be a very critical component as well in supporting students when they come back from the pandemic. We have students returning to the school building for the first time in a year and a half. We've got to be able to support them, and this is an additional way to do that. Another thing that gives us some more flexibility is if you look at this eighth-bell time, you have 85 minutes every other day for eighth bell. This gives us a really rich opportunity to be flexible and give kids more opportunities for other classes. One of the things that Jack said was, you know, sometimes kids get scheduled out of, or closed out of, an elective class, or they have to choose between band and maybe the only bell we could offer a very specialized advanced placement class. This can free that up a little bit, if we divide this into two quote-unquote skinny bells. So, we might have a bell that would meet for 40 minutes, then you change, and then you have another bell for 40 minutes. This would give our, our students extra time possibly, if they have band on an A-day. One of the concerns we heard from the performing arts was, we need to see the kids every day. So, maybe they have the 85 minutes on an A-day, and then they have a skinny in the eighth bell on the B-day, so they're seeing that band teacher, or the orchestra teacher, or the choir teacher for 40 more minutes. This also really gives us a chance for remediation. We could do the study skills, we were going to try and do first bell this year. That could be, you know, the 40-minute window here during the eighth bell. Kids could go see, you know, their science teacher for some extra help. We're going to schedule that and rotate that through and set up how that's going to look. This also would fit nicely for health and phys ed. This is the equivalent of, if you can follow this with me, every other day for 45 minutes over the course of an entire year, that's a semester's worth of instruction. So, we could do a half-credit class. That gives us more flexibility, especially for us, because I share a music teacher, sorry, I share a gym teacher with Colrain, and I share a health teacher with Pleasant Run Middle. So, this helps us get kids into those classes that are semester-long, also with, with art. And so, it gives those kids more elective opportunities within this day. I'll leave this up on the board, I guess.
Yeah, a couple of things, I just, this is my fault for not putting it in the slides. A lot of conversation around juniors and seniors, especially seniors. So, we have seniors that co-op either with Butler Tech or in another way. We have seniors that, I mean, with 20 credits to graduate, they enter their senior year, a lot of them eat just English, just math, sometimes even less. And so, a lot of flexibility with this schedule, you may have seniors, you could conceivably have a senior just going A-day and working on B-days. We much more probably can see a schedule where maybe they're going on two blocks each day or something like that. But again, I think the ability to work that out with the individual student based on his or her situation, that's what we're trying to get to, is flexibility, so I think that's a key. Joe mentioned sharing teachers, we're going to share two music teachers with Motford Heights next year. It is better for us, if they miss one block, they're three bells. By the time you say they're teaching at Motford Heights and now they're traveling, and you start trying to match up times and things like that, Angie and Jacob are the ones we're sharing. We feel like it would be better, we know we can't schedule them in one block on those days, and that's better than missing three bells and then trying to match up all the courses we need to offer. That's a key. And the last thing I'll mention for us, Joe mentioned the three lunch bells. For him, having that chunk for Colrain, we do not want to go back to three lunches after, I mean, if you've been in our cafeteria two years ago, we're basically putting between 500 and 600 kids on a lunch block and with three lunch boxes. Having, having COVID, we're now running four. It's a much healthier, much safer situation, so the blocks allow us to continue to offer four lunch blocks, which is very difficult in a seven-bell schedule, unless you would have a lunch block that's two hours long and you try to rotate everybody through. And so, those are just some of the logistical benefits of this too, the sharing of teachers, the lunch, and tailoring it towards seniors that maybe have jobs already, just need to come in for English or whatever. We all feel like those are benefits.
And another, another added piece with flexibility here that we're, have to flesh out and take advantage of, and I think it probably will grow a little bit over time, is with both high schools on this schedule, it might increase opportunities for a student that may be on the Northwest campus to take a class from a Colrain teacher virtually. What that would, would mean would be something like, well, if there's AP Biology, maybe there's only one section at Colrain, one section at Northwest, we could offer it at different times. So that if you wanted to take band at Northwest, you could go to a lab or a study hall, and you'd log on at the same time every day when the AP Biology class met at Colrain. And that way, we can really leverage, you know, the staffing at, at both high schools to benefit the students and expand their opportunities, so the kids aren't having to choose between an AP class and choir. So, I think that's an added benefit that we've talked about. Once we start building schedules, that'll become a little more clear what's possible with the... So I think that's an added benefit that we've talked about. Once we start building schedules, that'll become a little more clear what's possible with that. But I think when you look at AP classes, CCP offerings, you know, kids are not going to have to choose as much. That's really one benefit that we see that the schedule will bring.
You could conceivably have a kid go to Colrain on A days and Northwest on B days. I mean, I think, you know, and I'm not promising all these things are going to happen, especially the first year out of the chute. Again, I want to stress the fact that we believe this gives us flexibility to do a lot of different things in a lot of different ways.
I have a quick question. On the A/B day, if you have a student, say misses a day, so is there flexibility in the B day to catch up on some of that stuff from May or are they going to have to wait two days?
Great question. We've had a lot of conversation about this. We believe we've put a lot of work into Google Classrooms this year. It would be a shame just to set those back to the side. So we're going to ask teachers to kind of keep, we're not asking they put as many videos and do all the stuff they've done this year because we've had all these remote days. But if they keep the Google Classroom up and running as a side, kind of a sideline to their class, then when a kid misses, they can stay current and up to date by logging into Google Classroom and staying with the class. Because you're right, we've had a lot of conversation. If I miss a day now, I miss 85 minutes and I don't have the class for a couple of days. And so we feel like the Google Classroom is one way. There'll be other ways to get to that. But yeah, we've had a lot of conversation about that.
And then if it's a freshman or a sophomore who's scheduled into that study skills bell and the skinny in the eighth bell, that's an additional time for them to get some support as well.
How many high schools, high schools around the district are using this, this A/B schedule?
Around the city, you mean?
Yeah.
There are several. I surveyed several. Mason, for example, runs 70 and 80-minute bells. Dakota runs a form of a block schedule. They run it three or four days a week, and then they run one day where they go through all seven. You'll find variations all over the place. I've got a spreadsheet with several schools and the different ways. I think Edgewood's going to a block either next year or the year after.
I think Wasal does something similar.
Okay.
Yeah, it's one of these things where people do a lot of different things in a lot of different ways, even some of the schedules.
I also, are the, do you have a feeling that the teachers are buying into this, this A/B schedule thing?
I do. You know, we have a mixture of staff in terms of experience. We have some teachers at Northwest who taught on the 4x4 block that was around until maybe 2008 or 2009. And we have staff who are younger and have never taught in that model. But I think seeing the benefits of this, I think they are buying in. I think they understand how, like right now at Northwest, we have to double-block our science classes for our honors freshmen, honors sophomores. And so that takes up huge chunks of time in their day. So they only have two or three bells at most to schedule art or music or foreign language. And so we can be a lot less inflexible, if you will, with something like this. And so I think people do see that and see value in that. So I do think there's a lot of genuine buy-in there.
Jack, you made a comment about teacher coming in, teaching 30, 40 minutes, and then the other 30, 40 minutes to do their homework. How are you guys going to monitor that so that doesn't happen or is that something that will happen? Or what's, what's the process for that?
We'll monitor it. Yeah, I do not want a teacher just giving homework and spending. So that would be something. Now, it's going to take a lot of work on the front end to talk about it. It's not just as simple as taking two days of lessons and cramming them in one day and trying to teach them that.
Right.
And that's where a lot of the curriculum work will come in in terms of really, my experience with this in the past was what happens when you sit down and look at the course of the year and realize I have less total days, but these chunks of time. It's amazing sometime how some of those pet projects and some of those things that I just enjoy teaching have to go by the wayside because I prioritize what's important and what I'm teaching. And so we're hoping some of that takes place as well as, you know, we're going to do a lot of curriculum work to make sure we're not doing that.
I think all of you are being trained on the rigor walks also. So as you're redoing your required walks through the week, you'll be able to check on that also, I believe. Correct?
Yes, that's what I was going to mention. We've, we've invested in a walk-through model. And if you think about the ESSR funds, we've hired additional deans of students and additional guidance counselors and some other coaches to help support the work that we're doing. That's going to free us up to get into the classrooms to do that monitoring.
I will say this, and I want to be transparent about this. That's not an acceptable everyday form of teaching. But if you were to ask a lot of teachers throughout the district, not just high school, why do a lot of kids miss out courses? Because they don't do homework and they don't do anything outside of class. And so I don't think it's a total waste of time from time to time to have projects and different type of work that the teacher's right there to help the kids to do some of this work. Instead of once they walk out of the room, it's over until the next time they come back.
Right.
And I would, again, I would stress that with that. I was a very visual wearer myself, right? While I'm sitting there in class and the teacher's doing it, I got it. Once I didn't have class for a couple hours, went home and was trying to figure it out, and hopefully again, I'd have the teacher there to visualize everything what's going on, I struggled.
Will this enhance the AP courses and the AA courses?
I think so. You know, I taught AP in the block schedule and the 4x4, and I felt like, obviously, you have a ton of stuff to cover. But this will allow, I think, for less of that teacher-directed instruction. And that's a, that's a focus piece of the rigor walks that we'll be doing to get more students-centered. So you could do primary source analysis. You could do more writing. You could do, you know, have students get feedback to each other on their writing and things like that.
The only thing they do this time of year, as you know, Joe, is they give a lot of practice tests because the actual AP test is several hours.
Yeah.
Forty-eight-minute bell, you can't even really give an effective practice test without breaking it up into new segments, which kind of defeats the purpose. And so ask a guy like Sean Finney, would he run like a bigger chunk of time? Especially in the spring, we get closer to the English test, he'd tell you, yeah.
And I'm not saying you guys did not mention this, so I apologize if that's the way it's being taken. But I think with this, you've talked about the importance of eighth bell with remediation and enrichment. But I think the other thing is AP, CCP, more gifted-type services, your performing arts, the ability to schedule band. And that gets tough too because performing arts teachers worry about, you know, 85 minutes is a long time to practice. You get fatigue and other things, but you also have the ability to schedule your winds versus your brass versus some other things. But it's not just about intervention. We have a lot of kids who are just kicking butt and taking names on remote learning. And so they're going to come back ready to go. But this is also a way to build up your performing arts programs and get them back where they need to go also, correct?
Yes, and that's where, again, I think we can schedule either within the A day or offer skinnies for the eighth bell and maybe even on a limited basis the fourth bell. You know, I have orchestra and band that are going to tailor every morning, like what Jack was saying with Jake and Angie going to Monfort Heights. That gives us more opportunities so that kids could have that experience every day. And the extended benefit of that is, again, it's an additional time to meet so that frees up another bell in their schedule. They could take an AP class. They could take something additional, whereas before they might have had to choose. So we're less inflexible and kids are not going to have to choose as often between an AP or CCP class that they want because it's only offered one bell a day. And that bell happens to be the same bell as AP art or, you know, show choir.
And then I'll be quiet after this, but Leslie, I think you can speak to this. Science has just been dumped on with 45 and 47-minute bells. And to go to 85, science teachers ought to be ecstatic because you have time. And if you think about, our high school teachers have done no experiments for a year since last March. And so now maybe we can get the interest of more students and engage more males especially with the hands-on approach and get that going, so.
And I think like if you took a Mark Lang and you said on A days, you're going to have AP Bio and Honors Bio, that he knows he's only setting up for two labs that day. He's tearing up seven out of two labs. Whereas when you're teaching a seven-bell day and you're trying to engage kids in several different ways, seven, six out of seven bells out of the day, you've got to tear down and put up and all that kind of stuff. I mean, look, I've been doing this for a long time. A ton of schools do seven-bell schedules, but if you want to talk to them, there's a lot of limitation, a lot of, and so we feel like, and I'm just going to say for me, we feel like this is a way to step out. We're talking about the high school redesign and a way of doing things differently. We're coming out of COVID. Let's kind of, let's kind of just take the opportunity we have and do something different and provide our kids a lot more flexibility and a lot more opportunities for deeper learning.
And now that this is on the board, I wanted to, like I spoke to this a little bit, both of us did really. But if you have those students with the learning gaps or that are credit deficient, this allows us to double-block them. So what Jack was kind of explaining, and now you can see it, first semester, a student could take Algebra 1A, let's say. The freshman year, they have it second bell and sixth bell. So they'd have it every day. By the end of that first semester, that's a year's worth of content. They have one full credit. The learning gap is closed a little bit. Second semester, they would maybe take Algebra 1B. So now they're ready for their Algebra 1 test at the end of, end of the year. They've got that second math credit by the end of their, you know, freshman year, sophomore year, and they're on track for geometry as a sophomore. Or if they're a current sophomore, going to be a sophomore this coming year, they would take Algebra 1 possibly. First and fifth bell, all first semester get caught up. And now geometry, their first crack at it as a sophomore, they take that in a semester, kind of a sprint class format, if you will, kind of like what colleges offer. They've gotten two math credits back in that same year. They're back on track. Because we lose kids every year to Butler Tech, they're not eligible for programs because they're credit deficient. This is going to help solve that problem as well and keep kids' options open, keep them on track to graduate.
We know we're going to have freshmen, if you think about it. So we went out a year ago, March. And so take a seventh grader, he was at school from March till June. And then this year, they decided to go remote. So they haven't been in school in a long time. And so we're anticipating both sides. We're anticipating being able to help those kids. We're also anticipating more CCP, AP opportunities for kids. And so we're trying to prepare for as many seniors as we can.
And I'll be quiet, but the other, the last big thing is, so I believe two credits you can acquire in middle school prior to getting to high school, math and language arts. So you take phys ed and health during the summer. You're two and three quarters. Eight and eight after your freshman and sophomore year, a good kid. You're at 18 and three quarters going into your junior year. Takes 20 to graduate. So you could definitely be done by your junior year. I think, Jack, you're already seeing that with a kid or two. So this is a real possibility and something we have to track because it's very easily possible for a 19-year-old to be looking at going into college at the end of their junior year. So the social emotional part of that, but also the advantages of parents getting kids into college earlier. And some look at it as advantage, some with disadvantage. But it does provide that for some students. So something else to keep in mind when you change to an A bell.
So you're going to send a letter out to all the parents, the high school kids? Problem I have with that hypothetically, what if the majority of the parents, and I'm talking about hypotheticals here, what if they say, uh-uh, we don't want this. That's too long to be in a classroom. Too much time.
I'll answer for me when we have this conversation. What you're saying, I mean, I'm not going to deny it's a possibility, but I would say this, Joe. We've been doing this since March 22nd. I have not gotten, we know, we know about the cohorts, right?
Yeah.
We've got calls on both sides of the issue and that, got lots of emails, calls, whatever, love it, hate it, whatever. Since we've switched from March 22nd to now, I have not gotten one call or one email saying that, that the A/B is no good or large chunks of time or whatever. And the fact that, that we're going to be all in-person next fall, we're excited about it. And if there are situations that pop up and we can work something out for kids and families, that's what this is about. But just to answer your question, could we get some complaints? Yes. And I would just say, no bell schedule. We've been doing this a long time. We've talked for a long time. Do a no bell schedule is perfect. Each one has limitations, each one has advantages. But I've not gotten any complaints about the schedule we're currently in.
And you said that the discipline problems have gone down percentage? Okay. That's good. That's great.
I have two questions. One, what does the A day, B day look like for the week, from week to week? Because right now, you have the, you know, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, Wednesday, Wednesday.
You label the calendar beginning of the year A/B and you just, you roll the whole year. So if you have a snow day, it gets too confusing to start adjusting. You don't want kids coming in the door and not knowing what day it is. So a scenario in the winter time, we had school on an A day. We had a snow day on a B day. When they come back, it's A day. And what you'll find out, it doesn't always work. If all of a sudden you get five, six snow days, it could, it could mess it up a little bit. Teachers have to adjust. But over the course of the year, if you start trying to go Mondays, Tuesdays, it's like, like most of our days off are Mondays or Fridays. You have the holidays, the three-day weekends and things like that.
Right.
And so we label it A/B and we go the entire year as A/B.
So you're just going to know based on your calendar?
Correct.
Like the, the school calendar that that kind of does? And then Joe kind of alluded to it. Is, so with the referrals, the discipline issues, how much did that jump since March 27th? Or did it?
For us, a little bit, but not much.
Yeah, I would say the same. And some of it has been, you know, after school, which would have happened cohorts or, you know, two kids see each other, there was an issue and it's, you know, we're going to settle this real quick in the lobby, kind of a thing. So that would have happened whether it's cohorts or whether it's your changing bells.
Is that attributed to, because we're comparing like, you know, fourth quarter now to, I guess, what, third quarter last year? So I guess that's attributed to your four transitions instead of seven?
That's a lot. I know a lot. We've got less kids in the building.
Less kids in his line.
Yeah. And spreading lunch out more, you know, not as many kids in that space for that amount of time.
Okay.
Speaking of breakfast, we'd have a lot of issues at lunch because you've got so many kids in the classroom here that long time. It's just, it's a recipe for aggravation.
Well, I've been up there at lunchtime to buy football tickets in the past and it is.
Yeah, much better this year with four lunch blocks instead of three, when you want to keep it that way.
I was going to say a couple of things. First, I think it's impressive that you guys have this detail around it. I agree, Jack, I think you said it. There are blessings through the pandemic. And I think kind of setting the train on a different track is one of the blessings, you know? Even though we were doing the high school redesign, would this have kicked off this quickly or would it have taken another year or two to try to roll something like this out? My first thinking is, like, we've put our teachers through a lot. They've been through a lot, you know, the last year and a half, almost two years. And so here, we're going to subject them to potentially something, even though it's similar to what we're doing now, it is different. So my first thought is, are they so fatigued with change that how effective would it be? And then I kind of started thinking, maybe this change is something that will refresh them and think of something new and rejuvenate them, you know, kind of a B-12 shot, if you will, for their, for their positions. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, like, there's a secret sauce with teaching, right? And that's the, that's the eye-to-eye contact between you guys and your teams and our kids. And that certainly gives that an opportunity for that to happen. And so to me, that's the win-win-win in this, having a, having a kid in the district right now.
We have the links with the student, with the teacher survey. Todd, Leslie have them, but I can send them to you. If you read the comments, I mean, look, it's been a rough year, so some people are fatigued. But if you read a lot of the comments, it's more, especially the one, like, we went through both of ours. Like I labeled green, the ones that said, yeah, I'm off board. Yellow is, I'm not sure where it was. I'm not sure I like it. You read a lot of the green and the yellow. It's stuff like, I'll finally be able to do this. Or I'm finally now can try this. And so 48 bells is inhibiting in a lot of ways. You just get a really good conversation rolling in out of class. And so I'm sure you're exactly right, but there are teacher comments. And I think some of it's because they used to teach in a block all year. It was different. So it's not a total one concept. But I just think, I get the feeling, and this is Jack's feeling, is people are just ready to do something different.
Sure.
And I'll just throw this in on that topic. To go back to a seven-bell day and then two years from now, because of a high school redesign, we want to change again. We feel like that would be more difficult than to go ahead and make a transition now and give this, give this a shot. Because if we go back to a seven-bell day, we keep working on the high school redesign and we bring another on the high school redesign, and we bring another plane to you in another year or two to people, we've changed so many times in the last five years that now people are fatigued.
Sure. And I think it's great to see the integration between the two different campuses. Like, every time that happens, whether that be, and I think we had some, the orchestra did something a couple, a couple of board meetings ago, they were talking about, like, we have to continue that process. Like, you know, there may be a time in, in the season of our district that we're down to one high school. And to start seeing that integration now, and not have a wall between whatever zip codes they lay it, I think is critical. So it's, it's great to see you guys, I thought that you were oppositional, but it's great to see you work together on an initiative.
Yeah.
Joe's a logical commissar.
Really?
Never seen you coach basketball, have you?
I think there's a benefit to the fact that you taught bacon classes and the four-bell schedule too. So if you do have some of your staff that goes through a frustrating whatever, you can go to them as when you were a baked teacher and how you did those. So you have to hold that to it.
Yeah. And to their credit, you know, Mark, you just alluded to this, you know, this has been a very challenging year for staff. And they're, they're in a range of different places right now, you know? But I do think, on the whole, they view this as an opportunity. And I kind of ask them, think about the work that you've done. Think about how far you've come since August and what you've accomplished. And I think this can just be an extension of that.
Sure.
So I think, you know, we all kind of need the summer. And when we come back in August, I think, again, this could be a really good opportunity. And I'm excited to see what could happen.
I think it'd be exciting if you guys petitioned some of the students and maybe parents and, and your, your teams. And then after first quarter, do another presentation of follow-up, say, hey, you know, here, here's the proof in the pudding. Or I think that would be, that'd be really interesting to see that.
And I think the fear of the unknown, as far as, we all know there's going to be some deficiencies. That's going to put even that much more stress, I would think, on a teacher. So the fact that there's plans in place on how we're going to be able to address that is, is got to be somewhat comforting for your staff to know, okay, we are going to have the extra time to do this or do that. And the ones, as Todd mentioned, you know, your, your students that are in AP and, and that, that maybe they feel like, I mean, let's face it, this last year and a half has just been, it's been hard for everybody. And they're going to have opportunities to keep soaring too. So I think, I think it addresses all students. It's not just one group of students.
Some of our teachers see as many as one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty kids a day in the seven bell.
Right.
To know that you're going to see sixty, seventy, I got to think psychologically there's a little.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think this sets us up really well to maximize the use of the ESSR funds that we have for the next two years. When you think about, again, being able to double block, we've hired an additional math teacher, an additional English teacher, an additional intervention specialist at Northwest. I know Jack's done some hiring. We're hiring data coaches and things through Hamilton County. And so if my plan bell is sixth bell, I would have a thirty-minute duty on every B-day. That duty is to meet with one of the coaches or meet with an administrator or, you know, talk about instruction, assessment, where are the kids, how can we get them to grow? So again, at the end of that two years, when the funds expire, we're stronger than we were pre-pandemic. And so that would look like a thirty-minute duty to meet with a coach or an administrator or part of that team, then a fifty-five-minute plan bell. So just the flexibility and really, it just wraps itself around the use of those ESSR funds too, to really maximize that opportunity as well.
You know, Joe, Todd, when those ESSR funds run out, we have something, we have something already budgeted where if this goes well, we can keep those extra teachers and staff that you guys have hired, you know?
Yeah, that, that part we do not have budgeted. So, but the good thing about the schedule they're going to, it can work with the existing staff they have. It's not like the old block where, when we moved away from the four-block version, we cut like thirty-six teachers at both high schools. So this doesn't need that. We can, this is in our staffing plan that currently works.
Okay.
But they won't have to make any reductions, and they can keep the schedule going.
Yeah. If we would have said in July, this is what we want to do, to limit exposure and, and open up the school safely.
Yeah.
You know, this, this would have been a viable plan with our staffing as it was.
Okay.
And this is much more resembling to their experience, once they get out of high school and go to next-level education. This looks a lot more like a, a college schedule for them than it does every.
And the ESSR fund goal is, within two years, those double-blocked math in LA kids, we will have to catch up there. And, you know, their staff's doing a good job. It's just the kids we haven't reached since last March. It's just those outliers that are there. So.
Yeah. The, the range of needs that we're going to meet in August is going to be greater than we've ever seen. We know that. We just don't know what that's going to look like or to what degree. But we have the plan in place.
Well, I think what's key too, and I think I've heard you say it at least four times, when the ESSR funds after two years run out, I think that constantly has to be part of the conversation so that, I know we'll be preparing the staff so that they'll be able to, to continue this, maybe without some extra help. But I think they need to keep hearing that. So all of a sudden, you don't, two years from now, wait, what? You're taking this away or someone and so forth.
Right.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us into legislative updates.
Okay. Pretty much what I have to share is House Bill 110, which is the budget bill. It includes the fair school funding plan, is currently with the Senate, and they're going to be hearing in their primary, the Senate Primary and Secondary Education Committee is going to hear testimony starting this week on that budget bill. And be going through committee for, what, pretty much the rest of this month, and vote in June. And hopefully that goes well. And that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Button Tech updates?
Yeah, just one thing, Mark. May seventeenth, Button Tech, we're going to have the graduation down at the Seminath Center. And what they're going to do is, we're going to have two graduations, one at four o'clock and one at seven o'clock because of the social distancing and getting enough people in there so we can, you know, get kids, you know, four to six tickets for their families to get in there. So that will be two, actually, two weeks from today.
So the, so the kids will have two graduations, basically, one for our district and then one for their Button Tech program?
Correct. Yeah, we're just splitting up the, all the Button Tech, just splitting it up into two.
Great.
That's on our next meeting date.
Please.
It's on our next meeting date.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any reports from employee organizations?
No, we do not.
Okay. That moves us into community comments. And we have one community comment tonight from Jacqueline Woodson. Come on down.
Okay. I have to first, to be honest with you guys, I was very hesitant to come and speak out of fear that the issue that I have, this decision is not going to change. But I also know that if I don't bring light to it and no one knows about it, nothing can change. But I also feel very passionate about it. So I, I wanted to make sure I come. I do want to start by saying that I went to school in the district. My husband and I are raising our three children in the district. And I worked in the district up until this year, when I resigned due to having COVID anxiety. We also chose to keep our three kids home this year to do remote learning. Like everyone, we've had our ups and downs. I will say, in hindsight, if I knew what I, if I knew now, knew in August what I know now, we probably would have sent our kids to school because the district has handled it very well and managed the spread. And I've been very impressed. But now, we're kind of paying for choosing to keep them home. Remote students have been allowed to participate in sports, which I am so thankful for, as it was a saving grace for our oldest two. They have also gone, gone to all three of their separate fieldings several times for testing. I'm now being told that my daughter is not allowed to participate in an in-school activity due to capacity and social distancing. But the event has already been narrowed down by grade levels to follow proper COVID protocols. I just can't imagine that the very few remote kids that would even be interested in attending this event would make that much of an impact on capacity. I have talked to the principal, Mr. Bowling, Mr. Garing, and Mr. Gilbert about my concerns. My understanding is that the principal's decision, it's his, if he wants to change his mind, he can. Also, another issue as of today, her school sent out an email due to two remote students saying that they are now doing a separate field day for all remote students, sixth through eighth grade. This has changed since it was initially by grade level. Now the remote kids are once again being excluded from their in-person classmates for an outdoor event that I was already told that remote students were allowed to attend. Also, that email was sent to over four hundred parents. I'm not sure if that's all remote kids in our school. But even if only half of them came, that would still be more students than if they were just allowed to attend with their in-person classmates of their grade. My main point here is trying to allow some normalcy and give the kids hope again. We've all been through so much this year, and it's, it's been very trying on everyone. You know, just trying to socially integrate them just a little bit to help ease them back in before next year. It would be amazing if we could all share grace and empathy with one another as none of us have ever been, students, parents, teachers, principals, superintendents, or school board members during a pandemic. Thank you.
Todd, can you give us some, like, operation feedback on that?
Yeah. So was not aware that there would be no participation in the field day. My understanding was that remote learning students could participate in the field day. So we will check into that and get back with you. The information I got on the dodgeball tournament was capacity and a small indoor area. And they were already at capacity and could not enlarge that area, just like we are for all sporting events and not allowing more fans in once you get to the twenty-five percent. So we'll find out about the field event, and then we'll get back to you tomorrow. I believe we already have your contact information, Mr. Garing does. So.
So is there a way that if, just for conversation peace, fifty, fifty kids are allowed in the gym, and then as they cycle through, they're doing their event, like, as soon as they're done, we move them out so that another group could come in and we stay within our capacity guidelines?
I don't know. It's, it's the principals and talking to them. And I don't know how it's organized. I don't know how it's run. We don't organize it or do it. But we'll definitely look into it.
Okay. Great. Thank you for coming and presenting.
Thank you.
Okay. That moves us into the adoption of the superintendent consent items.
All right. For superintendent consent items, the first item are personnel items. For those items, we have resignations, retirements. We have certified, classified, and administrative contracts. For all three contracts, N for teachers, classified employees, and admins, they are placed on steps. Depending on which step you're on, depends on where you are on the pay scale. Folks can top out for certified, classified, and admins. So that's where they are placed, based on years of experience. You will also find two job descriptions. One is for data coaches and one is for assessment coaches. And that ties in with our ESSR plans and how we are going to try to move the students for the next, or assist with the teachers for the next two years and move our students' assessment scores. You will also find proposed student fees that were put on for information last year, or last week, or last board meeting. We discussed, if you have any questions on those, I did pull up the email that Brenda described the changes. So I have that if you need a reminder there. But it, nothing changed with proposed fees. So that was just for information last time. They're for action this time. So superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the superintendent's consent items as listed.
So a second? Motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments?
I'm not going to be able to. I got logged out.
I had to went to sleep.
Well, things up here. I don't know where it went.
I love you local. That I see. That I see more.
Local. Sorry, guys. I don't know what happened. There it is.
There you go.
Here we go. Log back in.
Locks out after. I'm being used. There it is. Great. It passes five to zero. Next is the approval of fiscal consent items.
Yes, good evening. So first, I'd like to ask the board to dispense with reading of and approve the April nineteenth regular meeting minutes that were attached to the agenda. We also have the March financial report. And with that, we have our all-funds balance at almost sixty-five million dollars and our general fund unreserved balance at thirty-five million dollars. Our revenues for, through the month of March are at eighty-three point six million or at eighty-five percent of our projected revenue. And this is because we've already received our first half taxes for the year. And so most of our, sixty percent of our revenue coming twice during the year, and then not really much more comes filtering in, or coming in as we get to the month of June. Our expenditures are at sixty-six, sixty-eight million dollars, and that's at seventy percent of the target for the year. Our investment rate of return is point five-two percent. So this has dipped down a little bit. So as interest rates continue to be held at zero or point oh-two-five, we continue to be low in our interest rate of return. And our list of monthly bills are our routine monthly bills, as well as we had some curriculum supplies, security services and software, homeless transportation, and app psychology and OTPT services, as well as a roof replacement. We had, board revision fees are up a little more this year because we had several commercial properties that we are doing complaints on and challenging their valuations, as well as we had some LLCs, which they were using the loophole to reduce their taxes. And so we're able to challenge those as well. And as we've been doing all year, more pandemic supplies and our auxiliary and grant fund payments. We also have a then-and-now certification. This time, it's a transportation repair of their radio system. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments for Amy? And they pass five to zero.
Okay. And next, I have the student activities handbook. This is for informational purposes only. And most of the changes are to change the dates, to update it to the new year. And then we have an addition of having cashless payments. One thing that has come about with the pandemic is having cashless payments, cashless tickets and things like that. So we did update the handbook to add that option in as well. So this will come back next board meeting for action item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
That moves us to superintendent update.
All right. For my update, it's more of just information and then just some information for parents and community members and what the principals will be putting out. So we've talked about this a lot tonight, and high school really hit on it. And it's our loss of learning or the, the COVID slide. So it's almost like getting a clear understanding that, you know, we are in the middle, as we've said many times, of the worst pandemic in over a century. And you start to ask, is it a learning lost or is it an illusion? Because we have students and staff that are not getting it out of the park, whether they're in person or they're in remote learning. And we have students who have been accepted to some of the best colleges in the United States. We have students who are doing really well on tests and exams. And when we get our AP results back, we expect to see the same thing. And we have some ACT scores that are just phenomenal. There is a silver lining, and it's looking at the learning and the teaching. There is a silver lining, and it's looking at the learning and the teaching that is going on in our classrooms and virtually. There's a gentleman named Tom Schimmer, he's a professional education author and speaker that recently talked about when, when we get back to normal, we have to get them caught up, is where we, we all start to hear. And it's all, we're starting here, over and over, and so you worry about what Jack, some of the things that Jack and Joe talk about, and it's, it's pretty much, aren't things stressful enough for students and teachers without saying, oh, by the way, once we're back to normal, you have to make up one or two years of learning loss? Well, the thing that we got to remind everybody about is kids just aren't widgets. You don't put in extra overtime like you do in a factory and make up your gains. Putting a little overtime just isn't going to fix the problems. And, and we know that with the high school, they haven't lost them because they've been in person or they're participating in remote. We've lost them because they just haven't shown up. They're not logging on, they're not doing what they have to do. So with that schedule they've put together and with some of our Knights Gate and our, I think they call it Cards Gate Accorine High School, we're able to do some makeup learning and, and get them the credits they need to recover there. But if, we, we have to keep our focus as we return next year on the emotional support that our kids need, that our staff needs, and we can't focus on the narrative of that everybody is behind. I mean, you start asking yourself, who are they behind? Are they behind last year's students? Because last year's students unfortunately lost the last three months of school. Are they behind this year's kids? I mean, what happened to this group of college kids? They lost a whole year of college, they didn't get to live on campus, they didn't get to experience life as it was. I am amazed at how many of our kids didn't go to school this year because they are the moneymakers for their family. We've did, we've done house visits, and they're like, hey, my kid's making money and helping us support ourselves. So, you know, they're doing what they can do, but they have to work this job. So, you know, I applaud our kids for doing what they're doing, I applaud our, our parents for doing the best they can, but there is no school that exists anywhere where every kid's on track. So if you look at what we're focusing on now, we're focusing on engagement, focusing on the critical engagement skills and 21st century competency skills, portrait of a graduate's going to do that. Who knows, maybe next year we even surpass some years with what our kids gain. I don't know if it's the end of the world if for this reason this year we didn't get to complete our favorite unit or our favorite project. But we, we can't sit around and just tell each other, hey, these kids are behind, we have to stay positive. And I think our curriculum, the curriculum department has got some things in place that will help administrative teams be stronger by getting out in the classrooms with the rigor, pushing it, checking on engagement, having assessment data coaches and instructional coaches in the building that will help teachers, because that's who needs the help. They've never lived through this. There's no training in college that any of us had sitting in this room that prepared you what we, we saw the last year. So that's where our support monies and our support mechanisms are going to. We know that retention isn't the answer. We need to know that buying more computer programs for students isn't the answer, especially after being on them for 13 months, by the time we get back, 17 months. Our students need to be in school with our awesome staff, and that's where we're going to have them next year. We are reopening full go. We have lowered our class sizes for next year in elementary. Daryl and Brenda and Dustin and Leslie have done a tremendous job of getting lower class sizes for our elementaries, the numbers are phenomenal. We're looking at 20, 21, 22, 23. They're, they're not high numbers, so they'll be able to function better. They've listened to the teachers and the elementary principals, there's going to be one aide per every two classrooms, so that aide can go back and forth, help deal with social emotional issues, help do with small group pullout, free up a teacher to do what they need to do. Extra counselors for individual and group work, extra intervention specialists, extra help for enrichment services that promote more gifted services, as we did with our, we talked about with our middle school programs. Extra math in LA teachers that you just heard about for the high school, we're also doing that with our middle schools, promoting our performing arts programs over the summer and during the school year using our ESSR funds. Flexibility of scheduling, allowing individual schools to work on schedules that best meet the needs of all their students. But the other thing I want you to know is each principal is going to work with their evaluators on putting a message out to their parents. This is what we're using our ESSR funds on. And I know I've talked to a couple of you about that, that they need to hear from their principal, what did you and your staff work on? What are you using your ESSR funds on? Because they made these decisions, so they're going to work on putting that out, talking specifically about what they're using it on and have ownership for it. So we're working on putting some details they can pick from, putting a letter together they can pick and choose from, but I think it's important to hear from the leader of their building, what they're doing with it, so we're going to help them on that. And then the next two years is very important. We're basically going to set the bar for state testing. We don't have a cut score anymore, so then, we don't have test scores for the last two years. There has been no state report card for the schools or the districts. So whatever happens in the next two years, we'll establish that score. So we've got these two years when the funds run out, and that was the state and federal plan, to get it where we need to be and then move it forward from there. So we expect to see more rigor in instruction, more engagement of students, more student choice, student voice, 21st century competencies, and that's going to lead the way for our district. So it's exciting times coming ahead, but it's also keeping our teachers in a positive mindset, working with them, working with our parents, because, you know, even when we come back next year, parents are going to have fear, students are going to have fear, it's going to be different. You know, we did talk about discipline's down this year. Well, is discipline down because we had 300 at Northwest and 800 at Col Rain, when next year you've got 1,848 coming back to Col Rain and 890 coming back to Northwest? We don't know. But I do think less bell exchanges, longer times in class, more structured time is going to help, and you know, that's what they found out in the elementary also. They have found out when teachers supervise playground time for recess, they go to lunch for 30 minutes and they're out there with kids, they know the kids. The kids don't do what they normally do, so they've changed their routines also. So we've learned a lot this year, it's been a great learning experience, but I just want people to know that we are excited, good things are going on, and this pandemic is not the end of the world. There's a lot of positive things that go on, that are going on, and we're headed in a good direction and just trying to get things going forward. But I know a lot of questions are coming out about the use of ESSR funds and a lot of things we're doing, so we're going to work on getting that communication out there. If any questions pop up, just send them our way, we'll be glad to address them. That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? That brings us to board member comments. Joe?
Okay, very quickly, every teacher that was mentioned tonight deserves their, our congratulations tonight. Every teacher historically that you saw tonight had to sacrifice to become a teacher. The many hours of classes in the university, the many hours of teacher observations, the many hours of student teaching, going through the evaluation of their university supervisor and cooperating teachers. I was a teacher for 35 years in high school, and believe me, at times it's a thankless job, but the rewards come from seeing the students make academic progress and building that trust and friendship with the students. So once again, congratulations to those teachers.
Yes, follow up with Joe says to congratulate the teachers, and I think we're going to hear from the other half on the next board meeting, and then at the presentation of the A Bell schedule. I thought that was pretty interesting and can't wait to see how that turns out. Sounds like it's got a good shot.
Pam, I just thought your, the student achievement didn't come up.
No, it didn't. I'll just do real quick with the student achievement before, I don't know if there was a misunderstanding when I said that the second meeting of the month, we would have our presentations that were scheduled, but there'll always be a student achievement report. The OSBA wants us to have one, and I've just got a real quick one tonight. I want to say, I know both our high schools, Jack and Joe, have already recognized their summa cum laude students and also have had their military signings, so I want to congratulate all of them. I know they'll get recognized at graduation, but hopefully we'll get names and I'll be able to share it at a meeting for people that, you know, aren't at the graduation. But we have a young man that is not unfamiliar to us because this is the second year in a row. Big congratulations to Brandon Griffiths, a White Oak Middle School eighth grade band student who was selected for the second time again this year to play French horn at the University of Cincinnati Youth Win Ensemble Honor Band. The selection identifies Brandon as one of the top middle school musicians in the tri-state area. Students who participate in the program have been rehearsing weekly on the University of Cincinnati's campus with the band and will perform a concert this spring. That's a really big honor, and so congratulations to Brandon, congratulations to his music teacher and his whole family. So that, that's, that's really cool that he's representing our district and doing such a great thing. And then I also wanted to share this bit of information, I just realized I left my mask on. I would like to congratulate Amy and her entire staff, Chris and everyone, that, I'm just going to read this because it was not shared. Congratulations to you, your staff and your district on receiving ASBO International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for your fiscal year 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Your participation in the CO program is a testament to your district's commitment and transparency and high-quality financial reporting. So I know they've been, she's been recognized her and her whole, her department on the CAFR on the state level, but to be recognized in the international level is a really big deal, so I think a round of applause to Amy and her entire staff, because that's awesome. And also, it was great, I loved seeing all the teachers and the PTA awards, and it's just, again, they, it's been a tough year and a half, and it's nice to see faces and them get recognized, and boy, it'll be really nice if here soon, or next year, we can actually get people in here and more people in and, and get to see everybody. So that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Yeah, just congratulations to all the teachers for the Staff of the Year recognition. It's just really great to see, come from their peers and then from the parents. And thank you to Jack and Joe for their presentation on the A Bell A and B schedule plan for the next coming year. And thank you to Mrs. Woodson for coming to speak with her concerns tonight, and you should be hearing from Todd about that. You, you're our first, what, over a year?
First what, yeah.
You're right, to come speak, and you did a great job speaking, by the way. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I want to, I agree with Matt, thank you for coming. There's, I think the common theme tonight was, things are moving, like, things are moving, they're starting to move again, and we're going to have these situations like you have with your child, and we need to know about them so that we can build resolution around, whatever we can build resolution around, so we do genuinely appreciate you bringing it forward. Jack, your present, Jack, your, Jack and Joe show, outstanding, like, that was, that was, I'm excited that my daughter gets to experience that at least one year, so thank you for doing that. It sounds like there's an immense amount of detail that you've pounded out, you've done a lot of due diligence, and I love the interaction between the two campuses. I think that's, that's outstanding. And, and just congratulations to our educators, you know, they, they've really adapted and tried their best to move everything forward for our kids and for our community, and that's all that I have.
Next item is executive session. Board will approve a motions movement executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, this one, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the motion to move in the executive session as listed.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. We will take a vote on this, and then we will go to executive session. We will come out of executive session and have one more action item as we vote on a contract, and then we will adjourn the meeting, there'll be no other discussions other than the vote on the contract. And with the flag, oh, we will break for executive session. Yeah, I am, CFO for the extended contract. So I need a motion and a second to approve the contract.
So move. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? I would just like to say, if, if, we were just talking about this, it's nice that, Pam, you brought up the certificate and the award that Andy and her team got, and not just because of that, but because of just all the actions and how well she manages the district. The board is pleased to announce that we collectively have extended her contract to July of 2026, so congratulations, Amy, we look forward to having you.
Thank you.
To my knowledge, I don't think we've ever gotten an international award on the cap.
Thank you. You're welcome. And then we will adjourn the meeting. We need a second, motion and a second.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.